Planning Commission to order. I have a few reminders before we get started with this evening's meeting. The meeting order generally will be the presentation from the applicant, background from city staff, comments and questions from members of the commission, and then our public comment period for each of the items under the subdivision and land development agenda item tonight. For the public, please remember to state your name and your block when you approach the podium. There is a three-minute limit for comments. We ask that you only speak once per project, and please refrain from repeating comments that other members of the public have already stated. This meeting tonight is being broadcast, so for commission, members of the public, and individuals presenting for plans, please remember to use the microphone as well. Okay. Our first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the meeting of March 16th, 2022. Do we have any comments or motion from the commission?
Make a motion to approve? Second?
We have a motion from Commissioner Hackett and a second from Commissioner Polite. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Hearing none, the approval of the meeting minutes for March 16th passes unanimously. Moving on to agenda item number three, subdivision and land development. Item A, final subdivision plan for 777 New Holland Ave. and request for modification to the Saldos sections. Is there anyone representing this project in the audience this evening?
Good evening. I'm Jim Sanchez, engineer for this project, and I have with me Mr. Hefrit-Hayer, who is representing the owner. He's, him and his wife are, his wife is a daughter of the original owner. That's how that comes in. So, this is a reconfiguration of two lots subdivision on, applicant is applying for a reconfiguration of two existing adjacent lots. Each zone C3 Highway Commercial, and located as follows. Lot one, 777 New Holland Avenue, presently occupied by a Sunoco gas station. Lot two is 462 East Ross Street, presently occupied by a pizza shop, restaurant, and takeout. And both lots are owned by the applicant. Lot two is bounded also by Burrows Avenue. Size of the lots are, lot one is 9,494 square feet, and it's, we're changing it to .29 square feet, which is a little larger. Lot two will be smaller. It's now .167 acres, or 7,281 square feet, and we're reducing it to 4,136 square feet. The total area of both lots is .38 acres, or about 16,775 square feet. Number of parking spaces on each lot. Lot one, we have six spaces required. We have six spaces provided, with two ADA spaces included in that. Lot two, it's five spaces required, five provided, and one ADA space included. On the driveways for each lot. Lot one, which is a Sunoco station, has three driveways. Two, to and from New Holland Avenue, and one, to and from East Ross Street. They're both two, all two-way driveways. Lot two is one driveway, to and from East Ross Street. There we have parking along Burrows Avenue. The reason for applying to reconfigure the existing lots is the applicant is planning to position lot two for sale for the existing pizza restaurant use, which requires the following principal site change items for lots one and two for compliance with the city requirements. The new lot two requires reconfiguration from an L-shaped lot to a more rectangular lot, and separation of uses from lot one and lot two. That adjusts the lot lines and the lot coverage to conform to the ordinance actually brings the existing non-conforming lots into compliance with the lot coverage requirements. Right now, they're, they're, they don't comply with the amount of green space on each lot, and this will, this will bring them into compliance. Provide new curb and sidewalk along East Ross Street, as shown on the plan, including new driveways, grass strip, and handicapped ramps, and a street tree in front of lot one. Bring the parking space number, location, and ADA spaces into compliance. Renovate lot one to include reducing the length of the west driveway, repairing the depressed curb at that location. Add dumpster and enclosure and restripe the parking spaces. Renovate lot two to include reducing the impervious coverage. Obtain a stormwater permit for the disturbed area of removing the asphalt. Add an ADA space, convert to compact car parking spaces at Burrows Avenue, and add a dumpster and enclosure. Modifications requested are section 265, 33.1I1. Curbs allow modification to not require curb along Burrows Avenue, and require only shortened depressed curb and repair along New Holland Avenue, as shown on the plan. Sidewalks allow modification to not require sidewalk along Burrows Avenue, and require only repair of existing sidewalk and ADA ramps along New Holland Avenue, as shown on the plan. In section 265, 33M1. Street trees allow modification to not require street trees along Burrows Avenue and New Holland Avenue. There are no, the justification for the requested modifications. There are no curbs or sidewalks on either side of Burrows Avenue. It's, it's a 20-foot right-of-way. And it's kind of an alley there. There's, there are no street trees, and room is limited for street trees on this street. A new sidewalk was installed on New Holland Avenue in the last several years, and basically is in good condition. An adjustment is proposed for the driveway width on the east side of the depressed curb and driveway, which is a two-foot change. Street trees this close to the intersection on New Holland Avenue is probably not a good idea, as it would be in the site triangles and limits site distance otherwise from the gas station. There is significant improvement on East Ross Street by, in this plan, by adding a new curb with new sidewalk, new driveways, and a street tree. After conferring with the city staff. So, open it for questions.
Mr. Smith, are there any staff comments on this project?
Sure. I'll say that staff has reviewed this thoroughly. We're recommending six conditions of approval. We're recommending that all of the modifications be granted, most of which have to deal with Burrows Ave. That portion of Burrows Ave is truly very much an alley, with really no opportunity for streetscape improvements. The conditions we're recommending are securing shade tree commission approval prior to plan recordation, getting approval of a very small stormwater permit, and that no work commence until then, including all necessary ENS controls, erosion and sediment controls, for this, on the subdivision plan. The developer must prepare a water easement agreement and record it in the office recorder of deeds. The developer must submit a cost estimate for the improvements, along with a construction guarantee, and the developer shall record the plan and revised deeds for both lots, and provide evidence. Staff thinks that with those conditions, that this plan meets the subdivision land development ordinance.
Great, thank you. Was there a traffic study needed for this project, Mr. Sanchez?
No, the staff didn't require one. This is at an intersection there. New Holland Avenue is pretty heavily trafficked road, as you know. East Ross Street is more traffic than I would have thought, but it's, I don't have the numbers from the traffic, the county traffic engineer, since the staff didn't ask for it, but, and there's, so we didn't make any, any, these are existing lots, and we're just configuring, reconfiguring new boundaries.
Great, thank you. Is there any existing easement on record for the current configuration of the lots?
I'm not sure I understand your...
So, city staff is not aware of any easements for access, or water, or otherwise. So, currently, there's one lot, two businesses operate there. The lots have been used very seamlessly. And so, the subdivision and separation does require there to be some cross-easements for that to happen, namely, the water service that comes from New Holland to serve this rear parcel. And I'll just say, a traffic study is only required when there's 50 new vehicle trips in peak direction during the site's peak traffic hour. So, in this case, they were existing uses that are, that are there and are continuing, and there's no expectation for additional traffic.
Great, thank you. Any additional questions from members of the commission? Any comments from public at this time? At this time, do we have a motion from commission for approval?
I would like to make a motion for approval, the final subdivision plan for 777 New Holland Avenue, and a request for modification to the Saldos sections.
Great. We have a motion from Commissioner Whalen. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. A second from Commissioner Cook. I'll now call for the vote. Commissioner Hackett?
Aye.
Commissioner Polite?
Aye.
Commissioner Cook?
Aye.
Commissioner Whalen?
Aye.
Commissioner Ortega Brown?
Aye.
The motion to approve the final subdivision plan for 777 New Holland Ave. and request for modification to the Saldos sections is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
We did have some additional public walk-in during that presentation, so I'll just reiterate. For public comment, please state your name and block that you reside on. There's a three-minute comment limit. Please only speak once, and refrain from repeating any comments that have already been made. Moving on to agenda item B, the final land development plan for 15, 19, and 23 Tennyson Drive, and request for modifications to the Saldos sections.
Hello, my name is Randy Dautrich. I completed the plans for 15, 19, 23 Tennyson. The reason we had to go through land development is they're existing lots. They already have sewers, stub for them in the back, but three continuous building lots require us to go through land development. So, yeah, can you please scroll through? You'll see that right there, there are three existing lots right there, all connected, that we did establish through Angela, that there's our riparian buffer that we're going to be having through, protect all the trees along the floodplain. If you scroll, the required, this drawing was a smaller scale, but the next one, each lot's individual, because of the required information for each drawing, because it's all on lot stormwater for each house. If you could, please go to the first one. You can see here, this is 15 Tennyson. The, all the water is collected through the back with yard drains for the driveway, and transferred in the downspouts back to the rain infiltration bed in the rear. And then, there is, like I said, the existing, like, 100-year flood there, but we put a riparian buffer around, and we're in the process of trying to work with the city, because I guess no one had ever been written. They don't have a basis.
Could you please speak into the microphone?
Sorry. We're currently working with the city on developing the easement for the riparian buffer. They never written that type of easement before, so it's something new to protect that. I do show two shade trees there. The ordinance does require every 25 feet, but because of the required utilities and driveway, that was unable to be accomplished. If you can scroll to the next one, please, to Tennyson, 19 Tennyson. And here, again, you can see that it's the same process, collecting all the runoff for the driveway with the yard drain, transferring it to the downspouts of the house, and back to the infiltration bed. The riparian buffer extends down through this lot also. In the darkened line there, you can see, we tried to save as many trees as we could. We just only removed enough just to put in the infiltration bed and tie into the existing sewer lateral. Again, this, like I said before about the shade trees, this lot only ended up having one shade tree, and that kind of goes back to our request for modification for the shade trees, because we were not able to exude 25 feet, every 25 feet through the three lots. And this is our last building lot, lot 23. As you can see, the infiltration beds in the rear, and we collect everything just the same as before. Right there where the cursor is now, that's the lateral where the existing sewer is stubbed into the property. And that's the last. I don't know if anybody has any questions.
Before we open for discussion, could we have a motion on the floor from a member of commission?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Could we have a second?
One more time, I'll second.
Great, thank you. We have a motion from Commissioner Hackett, and a second from Commissioner Whalen. Could we have staff comments?
Sure. Can I just clarify, was that motion based on the conditional approval and modifications and the recommendation from the city?
It was.
Okay, thank you. So, this project is being recommended for approval with the modifications requested. This neighborhood is, you know, quite different from many in the city, and doesn't have the same streetscape standards, or streetscape that exists there compared to many other places. So, city staff is recommending that the streetscape form be kept with the adjacent lots. The developer, the conditions that we're including in the recommendation that the developer shall address all stormwater comments to the city's satisfaction. I believe we're just waiting for a comment letter back from the developer on some of the stormwater comments. The second one is the developer shall submit construction cost estimate of the improvements that is acceptable to the city engineer. The third one, which was mentioned in the presentation, the repairing corridor easement. City staff is working with our solicitor to draft an easement, and we appreciate the patience from the developer and engineer while we do that. We have never had to do that before, but we're pleased to be able to preserve a portion of the repairing corridor there. Other easements include stormwater access easement and O&amp;M agreement, which shall be recorded along with the plan. Fourth one, the developer shall provide a tree appraisal report to the city's satisfaction. Fifth one, the developer shall provide a tree protection plan according to the tree appraisal results. And the proposed tree removal shall comply with the land development ordinance, the tree ordinance, and protection, a tree protection manual, and replacement conditions and standards. The developer shall also submit a construction guarantee for the required improvements. Are there any concerns about any of these conditions that we've laid out so far?
No, I'd just like to mention, comment five, six, and seven. He was supposed to be out there today doing the inventory, just, because we hired Davey Tree Service through the recommendation from you guys, your office. So, I'm just letting you know that that's already being completed. He started working on it today.
Excellent.
And your first comment was done already. Angela, we spoke on the phone last week, so those comments are addressed.
Okay, excellent. Thanks for that update. There is one condition here that I wanted to propose adding, and this kind of came late in the game here, and that is recognizing that a very small portion of the garage on one of the lots is actually in East Lampeter. So, we've reached out to their planning office and asked how they would process this. They requested an official request of deferral from the applicant that East Lampeter defer to the city of Lancaster for approvals. Unfortunately, that requires action from their planning commission and from their board of supervisors. Because this is a land development plan in the city, they're treating it as a land development plan, even though it's only a very small portion of one garage in their municipality. So, we will, we'd like to add that to the recommendations, sorry, conditions of approval for this evening. So, that'd be an eighth condition, and it would be approving the plan conditional on the approval of, or the deferral of East Lampeter to the city of Lancaster for land development.
If I can just say something, I already spoke to the township. I provided the request for deferral. They said that won't be, they already granted that, the only thing, as long as we meet East Lampeter sewer authority for the sewer part. So, I'm just letting you know, and then I'm going to send them drawings, but that's already being taken care of.
Excellent. Could you remind me, is that lot connected to city sewer?
It's the East Lampeter system, but you guys have me a little confused, because we have to go through the city for the water, but I had to go through East Lampeter to get capacity approval.
Okay, thank you for reminding me. All right. So, those are the conditions of approval for this. We recommend approval subject to the modifications. All right, so those are the conditions of approval for this. We recommend approval subject to the modifications and conditions.
Thank you. Are there any comments from members of the commission? Seeing none, are there any comments on this project from members of the public? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Hackett?
Aye.
Commissioner Polite?
Aye.
Commissioner Cook?
Aye.
Commissioner Whelan?
Aye.
Commissioner Ortega Brown?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously to approve the final land development plan for 15, 19, and 23 Tennyson Drive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number C, the preliminary and final land development plan for 35 Eric Road and request for modification to the Saldos sections.
Good evening, I'm Claudia Shank. I'm an attorney with McNeese, Wallace &amp; Nurick, and I'm here this evening on behalf of 35 Eric Road LLC, which is the applicant in this matter. I'm joined tonight by Alex Peel with RGS Associates, as well as by Eric Scott and Mike O'Brien, who are representatives of the developer. We were previously before the planning commission in February to discuss this project. This is a lot located at 35 Eric Road. It's about 1.9 acres, and it's contiguous to the City Gate tract, which was also developed by Oak Tree Development Group. We're proposing to construct a 37,250 square foot, three-story medical and health service building on the property. In terms of the chronology of this project, we initially started meeting with city staff in January to discuss the project. We then submitted our plans. We were before the planning commission simply as a briefing item. And we've gone through two rounds of review letter comments with the city at this point, and we're here this evening requesting action on the plan. We have received comments from city staff in terms of proposed conditions of approval, which I'm sure Mr. Smith will review in greater detail, but all of which are acceptable to the applicant. At this point, I will have Mr. Peel come forward, and just since it has been two months, briefly review the plan to refresh your recollection.
Great, perfect. So the plan that's up on the board right now is an overall site plan rendering to the east, just for orientation, is Fruitville Pike. Moving to the west is the Home Two Suites, and then to the west of that property is the City Gate Corporate Center. City Gate Building One is the constructed building on the north side of the property. City Gate Building Two has not been constructed at this point. As part of the City Gate project, there is an access drive installed from Fruitville Pike. That extends all the way through the property and then extends out to Eric Road. So that drive has actually been installed to date. On the Eric Road property, that is fronting on Eric Road, which is the street shown there with the cul-de-sac. The access is shown as two points off the existing access drive into the parking lot that would loop the building. So here's an enlarged plan and view of the property. The loop drive, as I noted, goes all the way around the building. There's also access in the front and rear of the building to ground floor parking, as well as perimeter parking off of the parking lot aisles. There's also a parking lot aisle down the center of the building, and that would also provide access to ground floor parking. On the ground floor, there is limited habitable space. There is a lobby in the northeast corner of the building, a drop-off in the rear of the building, and then a stair tower in the southeast corner of the building as well. Utilities are served from Eric Road. There's an existing sewer main that this building would connect into with a lateral. There's also a water main in Eric Road. Water meter pit would be installed, and then domestic and water service would be served to the building from that point. Stormwater management, there's actually two subsurface stormwater facilities, one to south of the building and one to the north of the building. Those would both be located below the parking lot area. Landscaping has been done in accordance with the city ordinances. That includes perimeter landscape buffering along Eric Road. Parking lot landscaping and interior landscape area, as well as street trees along Eric Road. There are three street trees that we'll note in one of the modification requests that would be onsite just due to a lack of street frontage. We did run truck turning templates for both emergency service vehicles, as well as garbage truck access, and I apologize, I'll point out on the plan. In the northwest corner of the property, there will be a dumpster located there that will have an enclosure around it. So yep, so that's the trash truck exhibit showing access to the dumpster shown in green. And then for the fire truck turning movements, for the largest fire truck size, there will be access to the front and rear of the building. For the smaller engines one and two, we're showing access around the building based on dimensions provided by the city. Pedestrian connectivity, to the north of the dumpster location is an existing bus stop. So the sidewalk will be extended right where the hand is shown there, along the entire frontage of Eric Road, and then up on the, along the north side of the access drive. There will also be a walk into the property in the southeast corner that will have handicap accessibility to a crosswalk and a walk across the front of the building. I think that pretty much covers everything. We will have a riparian area along the boundary that borders the City Gate property. That will be protected. There is a stream in that location. The one other thing to note is the dark lines that are shown around the site, those will be retaining walls. If you've been to the City Gate property, it will be very similar configuration as to what we have for that property. That's it.
Great, thank you.
Summary, any questions?
Could we have staff comments for this project, Douglas?
Yes, I'll provide some brief comments. Madam Chair, I also have some questions. I can hold them till after the commission, or I can add them now. What would you prefer?
If you want to ask them with staff comments, that's fine.
Okay. You said with the staff comments?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So city staff is recommending approval of this project with the modifications as requested. Does the applicant have a copy of these conditions of approval that we're reading from? I believe we emailed them to you earlier, right? Okay. Sorry, I got them to you guys a little late. So I just want to make one revision to number one. So first, the developer shall provide a number of agreements or documents to us, including an NPDS permit for state stormwater approvals, a stormwater O&amp;M agreement, a stormwater access easement agreement, riparian corridor easement. That'll be the second project to have that. And the last one is a revised developer's agreement, which didn't make it on to these conditions of approval, but I would like to add that. And that has been, that is developer's agreement that is being negotiated with our city solicitor, and is actually a revision to a previous land development plan for City Gate. And just to elaborate on that a little bit, this project does meet the threshold for a traffic study. There was a traffic study done previously for the City Gate development for a much larger flow of traffic than is actually there currently. One of the buildings was never constructed. So the developer has asked to not do a traffic study for this particular portion, because the traffic study previously incorporated Building Two, which was twice the size roughly. So the traffic capacity has been planned for, improvements have been made. I think the only thing outstanding is light timing at some future date. And that's the piece we're working on, is revising that former developer's agreement, so that we can allow this to happen and ensure that we still get the improvements made that we need to have made. So, and the city staff is considering that as meeting the ordinance if revised. The second condition is that they record all of the sheets of the plan and all of the agreements. Third, the developer shall submit a construction cost estimate for the improvements. Fourth, the developer shall submit a construction guarantee for the improvements. Five, the developer shall record the plan and all required easements and provide us evidence of that. Six, the developer shall provide a tree appraisal. Seven, the developer shall provide a tree protection plan according to the tree appraisal and city ordinances. And the developer shall address staff comments to the city's satisfaction per the April 5 review letter. Are there any concerns with those or questions about those conditions so far? Okay. I'll save my questions for after the commission.
At this time, would a member of the commission like to make a motion before we proceed with discussion?
I make a motion that we approve with the conditions from the city.
We have a motion from Commissioner Cook. Do we have a second?
A second.
And a second from Commissioner Polite. Are there any questions from members of commission at this time?
According to your narrative, it says that a environmental cleanup was subjected. When was that conducted and when was it completed?
Trying to remember the date of the study, I think it was 2000, I want to say 2016. There was a comprehensive study that was done and was reviewed and approved by the PA Department of Environmental Protection.
Thank you.
Any additional questions from commission? At this time, if city staff would like to proceed with their questions?
Sure. I'll make one comment first, just about the fire safety issue that we looked at. We did determine with our fire marshal that this project meets international fire code. We looked at the different sized trucks that can navigate around this particular building, because there's no rear access, there's just one entry. So the Fire Bureau was very comfortable with being able to get at least two of our trucks, maybe more, back there and still have access in the drive aisles for our ladder truck if aerial operations need to be conducted. My question, Mr. Peel, is just about the sidewalk connectivity that we discussed. Can you, so there's, just for the commission's background, there were two issues that I talked about with the developer. One is the connectivity to Eric Road, to a bus stop that's located near the cul-de-sac. The second was pedestrian access to the access drive that goes into City Gate there. And I understand that there are site challenges with lock coverage requirements for zoning and landscaping requirements, but also grade issues and the retaining wall that basically encompasses the entire lot. Can you just elaborate on what due diligence you did and why those connections aren't feasible here?
Yeah, so starting on the southern or along the access drive, we are, our handicap accessible route into the property will be from the southeastern or the east entrance into the parking lot. That will have curb ramps, crosswalks, and accessible route across the front of the building. The next location that Douglas referred to is the western entrance into the parking lot. We have a small planting island in that location, and access in that point would be a challenge, both with the topography, but also all of the curb lines in that area would have to be depressed. There just isn't enough distance for that scenario where you come up and down with curb ramps. So we'd have some concern about controlling the vehicular access. Also, to that point, or in that location as well, and one of the items that we'll discuss is that we are just proposing an access or sidewalk along the north side of the access drive. We really want to direct people to the front of the building, which is where we have that accessible route, and that's through that eastern entrance into the parking lot. The other location that we had discussed, I think I noted in the, in my summary or presentation of the project, that dark black line that goes all the way around the site, that is actually a retaining wall. So this whole site sits up from the existing grade. In the area of the bus stop, so on the northwestern corner of the property, we're up around five or six feet for that retaining wall height in that area. So getting access from that corner of the site directly down to the bus stop is a challenge.
Thank you. Those are all the questions I have at this time.
As far as the retaining wall around the rest of the parcel goes, is the five to six foot height about standard across the property, or what are the ranges?
It does taper up. So starting in the southwestern corner of the property along Eric Road, it's about a foot or two high. It's not that high. As Eric Road falls and the site stays at a pretty constant elevation, that's where the wall height gets taller. That really continues around, all the way around the north side of the property, as well as along the eastern property boundary. And kind of the same scenario, it starts to taper down to a foot or two in the southeastern corner of the property.
What kind of site lighting improvements are there for the areas that are fronted by this five or six foot retaining wall? I mean, if I were riding the bus at that bus stop late at night, I wouldn't want to be, just me at a bus stop with a six-foot wall between me and the closest building. So what kind of lighting improvements?
So there are lighting, there is lighting proposed along, basically along the perimeter landscaping above the retaining wall there. That will be parking lot lighting, so that will shine down both on Eric Road as well as the parking lot. So as part of the submission, we did include a full lighting plan for parking lot lighting for the property.
Is there any bicycle parking included in this project?
Yes. So one of the items from the review letter, we initially had placed the bicycle parking along the access drive. We're actually showing it now in the northeastern corner of the property, and actually, because we just ran this exhibit, I think it's actually shown there in the northeast corner. And that puts it in closer proximity to the main entrance of the building.
Thank you. Any questions?
Following up with the lighting?
Yes.
There are a lot of places where obviously nature is meeting up with this property. Does the lighting spill onto that as well, or is that going to be contained to the property?
As far as along the riparian buffer area, I'll have to be honest, I'd have to look at the lighting plan to understand if there are, if there are shields provided along that side, but that's something we could look at.
Douglas, do we have a copy of the lighting plan that we could pull up for commission?
Yes, we can. Give us one moment.
That would have just been from the initial submission.
I have a question in the meantime, sir.
Yes.
So in order for anyone to, that's coming from the building to act, to get to the bus stop, they'd have to come out of the property to the driveways and around.
That's correct.
It wasn't considered for an entryway going directly from the bus stop into the property?
It was something that we looked at. That challenge that we have is the elevation difference, that the area around the building and in the adjacent of the parking lot. So, we don't really have a good way to get down from that point directly to the bus stop area.
No steps or anything like that would be?
We could take a look at that further. That's something that, that we have talked with staff about as, as looking at if that's a scenario that we can, we can make work. This site has a few things going on, on it. One of them is that we have easements as well, kind of along the perimeter, so we have to see how that works, but, but we will be looking at that a little bit further, see if that's possible.
That'd be nice, yes.
Are there any other questions from members of commission while staff pull up the lighting plan? Oh, here we go, actually. Never mind.
So, if you're April, but, yep. So, I, I believe the area that we were talking about is on the eastern side of the property, which is the common boundary with City Gate. So, based on the photometrics, the foot candles are showing that they're coming to the east. So, we can take a look at the light fixtures to see if there's an opportunity to try to shield those somewhat from that, that riparian buffer area.
Could we scroll to the north of the, the site? I would just like to see the lighting because the, the bus stop is displayed, but it doesn't seem like there's any lighting actually at the, the bus stop.
So, I don't want to misspeak, but the symbol just up into the left of, right at the entrance actually into the Red Rose Transit Authority Building, I believe, actually there's two light poles there that are existing. Those, we wouldn't have had in our photometric model because they're not new, they're not proposed. We can look at that again, but I believe there is lighting at the bus stop presently. Like I said, in that area, based on the plan, which is the survey. Yep, gotta love Google Street View. What did we do before this? I, I, I'm on here like, I can't tell you how many times, there's so many times a day, exactly. So, if you pan to the end of the cul-de-sac, yep, a little bit further.
Okay.
And, yep, see the white poles?
Yeah.
Yep, there's two lights flanking the entrance there, and then there's parking lot lighting So, I believe that should cover the existing bus stop.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I?
Yeah.
Mr. Peel, will this facility be operating 24 hours a day? No.
No.
Okay. Will it be operating past, past dark generally?
Yeah, most likely. In the winter months, yeah.
Do you happen to know when the last bus arrives at this location?
I do not.
Yeah. Okay. We're gonna have a, a planning commissioner is gonna look that up. I'm, I'm looking at the, the foot candles along the sidewalk, which are about, I think, point one, point two, depending on where, where you look.
I think so.
Generally, we only require street lighting in our streetscape districts, so it's not a surprise to me that, that wasn't provided here, but I, I am just curious to know whether you think that's adequate lighting for a pedestrian way during the evening hours.
Yeah, we can take a look at that. I, what, there's, as you know, international standards for foot candle levels for different types of uses. Off the top of my head, I don't know what that is, but we can take a look at that. There may be some opportunity, honestly, to shift some of those lights closer to the wall, and that might help the coverage a bit there. So, we can take a look at that.
Would, would you be, and would the development team be willing to accept a condition to work with the city engineer to potentially revise the lighting plan to ensure pedestrian safety there? I, I don't want to speak for the city engineer about whether a street light would be considered here, but it seems like there may be opportunity to either shift the type of lighting or the brightness of it, and, you know, within, within reason, of course.
Yeah.
Well, we're talking about shifting the lighting on the site, maybe back a bit closer to the retaining wall to help.
Correct.
Better coverage.
Yeah.
That's right. So, in this case, we have a very narrow right of way that we're working with and in between a retaining wall as well. So, we recognize there's limited opportunity in, in the public right of way there. I also just want to confirm, is this lighting 3,000 K or, or less on all of the property?
Yeah, I believe as part of the first review, we'd look back and that's what was specified.
Okay, great. So, I'll recommend that to the commission as well for consideration to have a condition that the developer work with city engineer and staff to evaluate the lighting plan for changes to enhance pedestrian safety.
Thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Wayland did look, and the, the last bus is 10:00 PM for that route. So, even in the summer, it could be a little bit dark without adequate street lighting, sidewalk lighting. Any other questions or comments from Commissioner or city staff at this time? Seeing none, are there any comments from the public on this project?
I just have one question. Jay Rosenthal, West Chestnut Street, Magnificent. So, I can't stand up all the way with my foot. What's this total square footage of the building?
Thirty-seven thousand two hundred.
And it's a medical use facility, is that correct?
Yes, it's a medical.
At this time, because we have a motion and a second on the floor, I will call for a vote. Commissioner Hackett?
Madam Chair, do we need to add the condition that Douglas noted? Can we just vote as is?
Should be. You can consider that a part of my recommendation with the modifications.
So, then I would make a motion, I guess, to add that condition as Douglas noted to work with the city engineer to look at the lighting a little bit more intensely.
Okay. So, we have an updated motion from Commissioner Hackett. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. And then second from Commissioner Cook. At this time, I'll call for a roll call vote.
Sorry, Madam Chair, I just want to clarify too that the revised development agreement is also included in the conditions too. Okay.
Commissioner Hackett?
Aye.
Commissioner Polite?
Aye.
Commissioner Cook?
Aye.
Commissioner Wayland?
Aye.
Commissioner Ortega Brown?
Aye.
Okay. The motion to approve the preliminary slash final land development plan for 35 Eric Road and request for modification to Saldos Section passes unanimously. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
We are now moving on to our next agenda item, Letter D, the introductory presentation on the final land development plan for 213 College Avenue.
Madam Chair, do you mind if I just make some, some brief remarks here? Since I know that we have a public comment that is forthcoming here, I, I just, for the benefit of everyone's knowledge, want to remind you what the, the purview of the planning commission is in this particular case. So, the planning commission makes decisions based on subdivision and land development ordinance. That is the purview of this body and, and its legal authority. Really, we're looking at safe ingress, egress improvements of the property, making sure that it benefits the public as they come and go and cross the property. And that may include public right of way benefits or, or improvements, sorry, or private property improvements to ensure that that happens. We just talked about a lot of them, sidewalk, lighting, landscaping, safe access in and out of the site, fire access. The planning commission in, does not have authority over height of the building. And the zoning hearing board is the place that that decision's made, or the zoning code in some cases when it's by right. And I'm, I'm making some of these remarks just so we can try our best to keep our conversation tonight germane to the authority that this particular board has. The parking analysis as well is a function of our zoning and our, our zoning hearing board when there's relief needed. We do evaluate all of these plans to ensure that they meet previous decisions and, and meet our ordinances. The commission votes on these plans with the confidence that planet, that the staff has reviewed all of those and identified any exceptions that might be made. And in that case, if an exception is made for parking or height, that would go to the zoning hearing board and not this particular board. We're also not evaluating the design or the aesthetics of the exterior of the building, the windows, the materials. These are architectural features, those are things that are discussed at the historical commission meeting. I hope that that helps just, sort of, keep us all in the right place in our conversation. That is not intended to stifle any discussion, but to invite appropriate comments for this particular board and to make sure that we have time to hear from our, our residents this evening. So, with that, I'll turn it over to the development team.
Yes, my name is Bernadette Hoennodl from Nicholson Hoennodl, here this evening on behalf of Adams Berry Associates. With me this evening, I have Dana Hanchin, who is President and CEO, Claude Hicks, Senior Vice President of Real Estate Development, and Tammy Fitzpatrick, Director of Real Estate Operations for HTC Mid-Atlantic, Tom Engler from Site Design Concepts, and Gary Weaver from Tippet Weaver Architects. Adams Berry Associates is an entity that was formed by HTC to serve as the developer for this particular project. I'll give you just a few, few comments and then I'm gonna turn it over to our design team to go through the plan that's before you this evening. As you are aware, this project involves the redevelopment of the property located at 213 College Avenue and is Phase One of a potential four-phase development plan by HTC and others for the area in and around the old St. Joseph's Hospital complex. HTC is looking to provide additional affordable housing opportunities throughout this phase development in this part of the city. The project at 213 College Avenue that we are here on this evening will include a 64-unit multifamily building facing on College Avenue. It then spans over the parking deck at 217 College and partially onto the parcels at 224 to 226 Elm Street. Phase One of the project, you have seen before. We were here several months ago with a sketch plan for your review. At that time, comments from the commission and from the public, as well as comments that have been made to us, media comments, and just concerns about issues in the neighborhood. We've heard all of this. We've tried to address it, we've gone back to our design team, we've taken them under consideration, and have made some revisions to the plan to address the comments that were raised, both by the commission and by the public. The revisions incorporated into this current plan, Mr. Englerth will go into in greater detail, but they are designed mainly to deal with the issues that were raised about second access onto Elm Street, additional traffic and parking onto Elm Street, and retaining green space on Elm Street. We continue to gather information from the public, and we have been trying valiantly to get out as much information as we can to the public. We have weekly updates, when there are updates, on our website and put out information on a rather extensive mailing list as to the changes and the issues that we're dealing with. You have the revised plan that you have in front of you this evening. Generally, it's the same with a few minor revisions. Mr. Englerth is gonna walk you through that. Questions from myself, Mr. Englerth, Mr. Weaver, or anybody from HTC, once the presentation is presented. So, with that?
Good evening, everybody. I'm Tom Englerth from Site Design Concepts. And as Bernadette mentioned, you have seen this plan before. As you're looking at the plan, the site plan itself, it may not appear much has changed, but we made some very significant changes to the building itself and the rear of the property as it faces on Elm Street. What you're looking at currently is the existing conditions plan. We are impacting four parcels as part of this project, 213, 217 College Avenue, a portion of that, and the two lots on Elm Street in the rear. The developer is going to own the two lots to the rear in Elm Street and the 213 College Avenue and have an easement to build over the 224 site where the parking garage currently resides. If we go to the site plan, I believe that's the demolition plan, we go to the next slide. Yeah, perfect, thank you. As you can see, this, we are planning to take down the building on 213, and in its place, we are going to construct a five-story multifamily, 64-unit apartment building. That building will extend back over top of the existing two, two-level parking garage and then into the two lots on Elm, on Elm Street. Originally, what you saw was a parking lot extending back into Elm Street further and also have an access point, ingress and egress onto, onto Elm. It's further down, it would have been further down in that area right there. Thank you. After hearing the feedback from not only the planning commission but residents, I would say the majority of the issues that were brought up resulted directly to that proposed access drive in the rear. We made significant changes to the building. We are leaving the ramp on the parking garage currently in place. We were planning to get rid of that and have two layers, uh, two, two levels that were not connected. That ramp's going to stay in place, and we have eliminated the access point and in egress and, and points onto Elm Street. So, now the traffic associated with this project will be restricted to the original layout. They will come in off of College Avenue where you're seeing now, that's one way in, and then there's a one-way out on College Avenue as well. Access to the, that's on the upper level. The lower level is accessed via the ramp to get down to it. And currently, there is an existing, what was originally entrance into the lower level off Elm, but that has been closed off and will continue to be closed off as part of this project. So, again, the traffic patterns will remain the same as they are today, and we will be not, we will not be putting any more traffic onto Elm Street as you see it. That provides us the opportunity not only to have more green space, but have less impervious on the, on the, on the site. So, our stormwater will still be in the back. It was proposed to be underground originally, under the parking area. We're still gonna have it be underground so that we can maintain some green space in the back, and we're also gonna have a small stormwater facility on the southwest corner of College Avenue. No new utilities, other than service lines to the site, and really, no, no new access points. So, those are the changes we made based on what we heard. Aside from that, the building's gonna remain the same. You asked about trash. Trash is gonna be collected within the building and pushed out on, on trash day. And really, that's, that's where we are today. That's what we've come up with, that's what we've submitted, and open to any questions you have about the project.
Thank you. Any comments from city staff at this time?
I'll just mention that, as stated earlier, this is just a, an introductory review, and there's no recommendation being made from city staff. We are still going through a review with our team. All of these land development plans are reviewed by our water engineer, sewer engineer, right-of-way engineer, city engineer, multiple planners, zoning officer, urban forester, fire marshal, and others. The team is actually quite large, so we're, we're working on those, we should have those comments, I think, next, next week. So, anyway, so I, I may have some questions later, but at this time, that's all I'll say.
Great, thank you. So, I'll jump into, to questions. One of my questions was about fire safety, but hearing that there hasn't been a fire department review yet, I'll move on to...
Oh, Madam Chair, may, so I will say, I, I tried my best to get answers to... So I will say, I tried my best to get answers to some questions that I thought would come up. I did, I've heard from multiple neighbors that fire safety is a priority, so I can address that in brief. I asked the fire marshal to speak with me earlier this week, and so I have some notes from my conversation that I can share. He, this is Captain Longenecker, determined that access to the building by trucks is adequate. There are many buildings in the city with less access than this. The two right-of-ways on both Elm and College, he deemed sufficient and met the international fire code. A stand pipe is being provided in the building for connection by a fire line. There's also a, my understanding is that typically, a connection is actually provided at all of the levels of the building and the stair tower as well, and on the rooftop in certain situations. There is a sprinkler system to suppress fires. That alarm system, if maintained well, also notifies the fire department if anything were to happen. He says that the fire department can respond in three to four minutes to any location in the city. The distance to the hydrant should at some point be evaluated during the site plan. The floors are also isolated from one another, and he felt that also helps to contain fires in this case. So those were some of the notes. I expect that those may show up in the comment letter as well, but just wanted to address that concern.
Did he evaluate fire safety for the existing row of homes adjacent to this property? I know that through zoning hearing, they were able to be allowed a variance for a five-foot setback, I believe, instead of the standard 25-foot setback. Was there any evaluation by the marshal because of the closer proximity of the existing row homes to this new structure?
Yeah, there are stair towers at either side of the development, and he felt that those stair towers and access to those two right-of-ways would allow sufficient, you know, for the apparatus to respond and gain access to the building. He didn't feel like the, what would be the southern face of the building was needed for fire safety. I did actually ask him about the alleyway, too. I omitted this comment earlier just because I figured this would be a discussion point later. I know that there's discussion of an alleyway being provided along the, in between the HTC project and the Chestnut Street properties. Fire marshal did not feel like that was imperative for fire safety.
Was there a green space requirement for the site, a recreation requirement for this parcel?
So that is one of my questions for the developer, is how many people are anticipated to live at this facility? So 64 units, there are one bedrooms, I think there are some two bedrooms, but perhaps they can clarify at some point what number of people live there. Regardless, I did look at the recreational space. If the green lots at Elm Street are used for some kind of programming or considered as part of the green space, that would actually allow for more than 120 people for development. I know that there's also a first-floor community rec room. There's, I believe, community spaces on the other floors, too. So altogether, by my assessment, the development more than meets the needs for parks and rec between the interior amenities and the Elm Street green lots.
Okay, thank you. And then moving on to site lighting, what kind of site lighting is being provided? Is there ingress into the building from the parking structure? What is the lighting there? What is the pedestrian safety for that access point, if at all?
Sure. So at this time, we do not have a photometrics plan simply because we don't have the exterior of the building lighting understood yet. However, the parking garage will be covered. There will be lighting interior to that. We don't envision much of any of that spilling over simply because it's going to be covered. The photometrics plan that we show will show primarily the wall packs around the building and how that lights the site. And at this time, we have no concerns about being able to meet the photometric requirements of the site. We just haven't provided that yet.
And then could you just, Douglas stated that there are 64 units in the building, I believe. How many parking spaces are there?
So there's 64 units, required 64 parking spaces. We are providing bike racks, and that gives us a 10% reduction. So we are going to be providing 58 parking spaces.
And then could you just talk about streetscape, street trees landscaping for the site?
Yes. So we are maintaining a pretty nice maple tree that's shown on the plan there, down on the Elm Street side. Yes, right. Oops, sorry. The current trees on College, we are still having them evaluated by our landscape architect and being able to go to the shade tree commission and talk about those. Those trees are not necessarily in great shape, and we're probably going to want to get rid of those and replace those.
Thank you. Any additional questions from members of commission?
Yes, I have a question. Five stories, isn't that the original proposal for five stories? And considering that you've made significant changes, and I know the concern of the community was that it was higher than most of the residential residences around, is that not a possibility that it be, that it not be five stories?
So at this point, really, the five stories is what's required to make this a viable project and provide the services that are needed for this building.
And did you say on the Elm Street side that the one entrance that was there is no longer there, but there's a ramp?
No, so there's an entrance, so there's an entrance, yeah, right there. Thank you. There is an existing entrance there. That has been closed off, and forgive me, I don't know for how long, a number of years anyway, simply based on the way it looks. Residents are parking in front of it. It's not an issue. As part of this project, that will remain closed. If, as different phases of the Washington Place project come in and they want to open it, that'll be a discussion at that point for them, but at this point, it is staying closed.
So the Washington Place Equities property across College Avenue toward the corner of Marietta and Northwest End Avenue could potentially be using this garage on this site for parking?
Potentially.
Is there a reason why these plans are not being considered together? There's interaction between the sites. I know that that Washington Place Equities property just came before zoning hearing board recently. They were granted a lot coverage exception for alleys for fire egress. Why are these parcels that are being redeveloped at the same time? I know that they are separate owners, separate properties, but there's so much interconnection between these two projects. It doesn't make sense to me to have them piecemealed and looked at separately.
Except you have developments that are on different timetables. HTC is on a particular timetable. Washington Place is not that far along in their development plans yet. There is interaction between the developers. They do communicate. They do try and coordinate things as they can, taking into account their own particular design plans, but it just wasn't feasible to do it all at once. And they really are different type projects in some respects. We're talking about affordable housing here as part of a phase, as one phase part of the overall project. In a way, Washington Place is sort of like, it's not a HTC phase, but it's another phase of the redevelopment project.
I do understand that, but with the heavy interaction between these developers and these properties, why is it that they're being considered independently of each other? I understand that there are different project schedules that the developers need to follow, but if we are seeing this garage now as part of this 213 College Avenue project and that entrance on Elm Street, that ramp is going to remain closed, as you've referenced, and it could potentially open back up in the future if the Washington Place Equities project needs...
Well, the reason it's closed is, my understanding, is to limit access into that parking garage. It's not being used at the time. It's not closed, the garage is closed right now. There are some structural issues that are being addressed. It's another reason for it to be not operative. What will happen as part of this plan is HTC, Adams Berry, has no intent to do anything with that access. It's there. It's a way into that garage that was always there and continues to exist there, but it's nothing that our project is going to be involved with. The Washington Place project may utilize it, but I can't tell you that right now, and it is an existing accessway that they would have the right to use at that time.
But HTC is the owner of this parcel. Are they...
HTC is the owner of 213 and will be the owner of the two Elm Street lots. There's a separate owner of the parking garage. HTC does not own the parking garage. We'll have an agreement with the owner of the parking garage to utilize the spaces that they need and to utilize the ramp that goes from the below level to the street level, but they are not the owner of the parking, of the entire parking garage.
Does Washington Place Equities own the parking garage?
An related entity owns the parking garage, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Are there any other questions from members of commission?
Yes, one more question. So again, going back to the height, was that one of the major concerns for the community at the time, the height of the apartment complex?
To my knowledge, that has been brought up.
Okay.
And if I could just state further, that height of a building is what is permitted within this zoning district. This property is zoned office complex and also part of it is zoned R4, which is a high-density residential, which permits buildings of this height.
Right, but the concern of the community...
The concern of the community, yes.
Was different than that based on the architect, the architecture of the community?
Well, we also have to look at the architecture of, it's not just Chestnut Street and Elm Street. We did take those into consideration, but we're also talking about the streetscape is really College Avenue. That is what our streetscape is, and that is a major factor in deciding what the building looks like and its size and everything. We also have to take into account that we are talking about affordable housing here. In order for this project to be viable, for the developer of this project to be able to provide the services, the ability to have lower rents, you have to have a certain-size building that can support a certain-size building so that they have, the economic model works in order to be able to provide the services and to be able to keep the rents at a lower rate over the course of the age of the building.
So to that point, with affordable housing, what is, what is your definition of the affordable housing?
Can I interject? So when this project was submitted to the state to receive LIHTC funding, was this plan that we are currently reviewing, the plan that was submitted to the state to receive LIHTC funding?
Yes.
Or was it the plan that was originally shown to the neighborhood?
This is the plan that was submitted for the LIHTC funding. The plan that was originally submitted to the, was not a plan. It was a concept. It was something that thought of, that was thought of very, very early on in the project. And then once you look at the properties, you look at what they're attempting to accomplish here, and the realities of the situation, the real plan, you know, what was proposed...
Why show that initial draft plan to the neighbors and then change it for the LIHTC application when you received community support based on that draft plan and they hadn't seen the actual plan that was submitted with the LIHTC application prior to submission and receipt of that funding?
That was not really a plan. It was a concept.
And I understand it was a draft.
It was an idea that was put out there, and then when it got to the point of being able to fully develop it, that was not a plan that they went with.
I'm just saying that it seems like a facetious effort to show a draft to the community to garner neighborhood support and then reneg and the final plan that was submitted to receive funding for the affordable housing component of this project, the neighborhood didn't see that until after funding was received.
I'd just like to make a few corrections and clarifications. Dana Hanchin, President and CEO of HTC Mid-Atlantic. And in fact, we did introduce the concept to the community prior to the LIHTC application. If you go onto our website and look under Get Involved, there is a website for College Avenue development updates. And I will share with you that on December 8th, 2020, in the virtual neighborhood meeting, because we are in the middle of a pandemic, we could not meet in person, the 64-unit concept was introduced. The PowerPoint is also found on the website to show the presentation that was made right now, April 20th, 2022. The tax credit application was submitted in late January of 2021. Those are the facts.
Thank you.
The suggestion that there was something devious done here is, I don't accept it well, okay? Nothing devious was done. Nothing was put out there with an effort to try and get neighborhood support and then to pull it out and put something else out there. That was never done, and any suggestion to that in a way is sort of offensive to the applicant here and to me. And I, you know, I don't take that well.
Ms. Hoennatal, if I may, I just want to add that the subdivision Land Development Ordinance outlines a particular process. This developer has absolutely met that process. They've gone above and beyond that process. Personally, I have never had a developer do as much engagement, as many meetings, as much outreach, as much website posting as HTC has with this particular project. That is not necessarily me coming to their defense. That is, I'm trying to make an objective observation here. So I do want to credit them where credit is due. There has been an immense amount of communication. There can always be more. There's always more to be done. I continue to look for ways that we can involve residents and empower them and bring this into this conversation. Tonight is, and this project, this plan, is not a referendum on their public process. They're adhering to the public process and exceeding the public process, and we continue to monitor to make sure that this plan is being done accordingly. In addition to that, they came to provide an introductory meeting, which was not required in our ordinance. They're here this evening to provide a second introductory meeting upon the final land development submission, also not a requirement of our ordinance, and they'll be back eventually for final action per the state-required timeline that we have of 90 days. So I just want to make known that there is a lot that has been done here. And one clarifying question for your team, if you don't mind, just to help button up this issue a little bit. You received funding, I believe, somewhere around September 1 of 2021. Is that somewhat accurate in that timeframe?
We're just checking the date.
Okay. I think it was August or September of 2021 that the award was announced.
I, October.
It was in October, okay. When did you engage a design team to start fleshing out this concept fully? I mean, not just the initial rendering that was shown to the community, but a more detailed development plan? Well, just, for instance, we had an initial meeting sometime around October or November, and you showed us an initial design. I'm kind of curious, when did the architect and design team come on board to help start designing that process or that plan? Sure.
Yes. Claude, if you don't mind. But it would have been prior to the submission to PHFA of the LIHTC application because they were working with the design team prior to that time, if you have an answer. Claude Hicks.
PHFA requires that we submit a full rendering, a full set of plans for their review pending pass-credit applications. So that was done when we submitted and when we had our neighborhood meeting. So that was done when we submitted and when we had our neighborhood meeting in December 8th, 2020, a lot of that work had begun to get to a concept phase. The application itself required plans, it required more detail. It was not a full sketch, it was not a full design, it was not all of the documents that are necessary to get approval from the city, but it was a fully fleshed out, this is what we are thinking. Because their team then gets an opportunity to tell us what they think, from a technical perspective, from a building perspective, from a construction perspective. So when we have our neighborhood meetings, when we had that one in December of 2020, it was for the purpose of saying, here's the best that we think right now. Here's what we are thinking right now. And then, at every subsequent meeting, we said, here's the updates, here's what we are thinking. When we first came before this body, what we heard was, from Elm Street, we don't want another regress, we want Elm Street lots left as green space, we want the tower left inside so that there's a turnaround. We accommodated and we did every single one of those things, every single one, to limit traffic on Elm Street. So from our perspective, and you know this very well, we have continued almost on a weekly, almost on a daily basis, to provide any information that anyone asks us about as fast as we possibly can, including updates on a website that are bi-weekly, including additional meetings with staff, including additional meetings with the city to try and accommodate everyone's concerns. Will we give everybody what they want? No, we will not. No building in the city of Lancaster gives everybody what they want. But everybody is missing the point. The point is that this is providing 64 units of affordable housing in a city that has an enormous need. If I put the 64 units in place today, today, it would represent 5% of the need of the city today, 5%. So the notion that we hid something, that we were deceitful, that we didn't provide information, we have spent tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars to provide documents, to provide plans, to think about how we do this in cooperation with the neighborhood. We, we went out in COVID and met with the neighborhood in COVID, sitting in a parking lot. So we have disclosed this all along. We have presented a plan publicly all along. There was an average of 43 attendants at every single virtual meeting that we had. The biggest question, the only question that was dominant was, can you stop the hospital from being closed during a pandemic? Our answer to that was, that is too late. I'm sorry, there's nothing that we can do. When UPMC first called us to talk to us about this, their response was, we have two alternatives. Either this works and this can be redeveloped, or we abandon the hospital, we put a fence around it, and we wait for somebody else to buy it. We are proud of our contribution to this effort. We are proud that we are doing something with a building that is sitting there and would rot. We are proud that we've been creative, we are proud that we've been forthcoming. We don't hide where we are. We're in downtown Lancaster. The notion that we have not been, we have talked with your office anytime you have asked a question. We have routinely met with you to give you updates, as we have everybody else. So no, there was no plan to submit something that we hadn't shown to the neighborhood. We showed it to the neighborhood two months before we submitted the plan. Thank you.
I would just like to say that I do have a lot of professional respect for the HDC team and the work that you do throughout the county. I didn't mean to imply otherwise. I'm just performing this role and asking.
It's just that the notion that we somehow are trying to pull the wool over somebody's eyes or, you know, did a bait and switch is disconcerting because of the type of organization that they are and the relationship we believe that they have with the city. And that's just been tough to take because of all they have been doing to try and get out as much information and be as responsive to this city as they can.
As someone who also works in affordable housing, I just have concerns about the way it was presented. Why would you present a draft that had 20 units and then a final plan that had 64?
And, and I just can't get across you that that was never like a definite plan. It was an idea, it was a concept. And once they started working on the project, you know, things change.
Yes, but I don't think that you could at large understand.
Yeah, and we did provide prior to, once it was determined that that was not going to be viable, that that could not work and be able to be sustaining over the period of time, that it needs to be sustained, sustained. And they started working on developing the plan that you're seeing now. There was public engagement, there was public information out there prior to, so that everybody could see, this is what we are submitting, this is what we have, we need to do in order to make this be a project that will be beneficial to the community and that will be economically viable.
I'm sorry, I just want to interrupt. I feel like we've talked about this, this topic a lot. It has not germane to the land development plan that has been submitted. That process has been met and far exceeded. And again, frankly, this has been the most engaged process I have seen from a developer. So I don't think that any of that has any bearing on the actual land development plan that we're here to discuss. I appreciate the concerns, but they're just not germane.
At this time, I'll turn it over to other members of the commission to ask questions.
One more question. What percentage of those, the 64 units is considered affordable housing?
All of it.
Okay.
All, all 64 units and in addition, 12 of the units are going to be for disabled persons. In terms of the income qualifications for those units, I don't know off the top of my head, but one of the HDC representatives could provide that to you. But it's somewhere between, is it 40 and 60% of median?
It ranges from 20% of AMI to 60% of AMI, roughly, think about $12,000 a year to about $40,000 a year. Rents would be set somewhere between $300 a month and $850 a month.
Sorry, Ms. Hansen, could we use the microphone just for the benefit of those who are listening and via streaming?
And is that the assumption for single, single-person households, those income ranges, the 12 to 40,000?
I'd have to defer to my team on the household size, but to repeat, the income levels are at between 20% of AMI to 60% of AMI. That roughly averages out to about $11,000, $12,000 a year up to $40,000 a year with a rent range starting from $300 a month to about $850 a month. I'll defer to my team to correct on the exact numbers, but I'm giving you roundabout numbers.
Any follow-ups? Any additional questions from members of commission? Comments or questions from staff?
Just with the timeline, in terms of completion?
Timeline, in terms of closing on the financing for this, if we move through all the land development approvals, we have to bid the, bid the construction out, complete, of course, the design development, bid the construction out and work towards financial closing, which we anticipate to be in September of this year. And then, right after that, we would proceed to construction. The construction schedule, I believe, is estimated to be a 14-month schedule and probably about six months to construction completion, we would start the marketing and lease-up of those units. So the completion date and full occupancy, I will defer to my team for that exact date. You're doing the math. End of 2023.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions from staff?
Sorry, I've lost my train of thought here. Are there other questions from the commission? I'll have to think for just a moment here. Yes, I do have one, one question comes to mind. The, the southern side of this building, it seems to me like there's some design considerations that need to be given to that interface with the rear of the Chestnut Street properties and particular lighting. I know we're going to see a photo-metrics plan in the future, so just making note that we would like to see that and also include the adjacent properties. Sometimes, you know, the lumens or foot candles are cut off at the property boundary. We would like for those to extend, you know, to a reasonable length. But also landscaping, I'd like to understand what the design will be there and what the maintenance will be over time.
I'd honestly like to see how you plan to treat the frontage on College Avenue as well. It appears to be green space with a couple sidewalks, but it looks like it had about 14 feet off the edge of the sidewalk, and I think that's a main frontage. So if you're going to show a little bit more landscaping, I'd love to see it.
Yeah, there is a, there is a detailed landscaping plan forthcoming. What was provided was strictly what's required. We're working with, with the developer based on a budget and trying to figure out what will work in there to make this appealing from the street and to the residents.
And also work with the city in terms of what the city requires for street trees and the like.
Any additional questions or comments from commission? Okay. At this time, we will open it up for public participation. I'd like to thank the HDC team for their presentation. Again, as a reminder, please state your name and block when you approach the podium. There is a three-minute limit. Speak only once and refrain from repeating any comments made by other members of the public. Thank you.
Thank you. John Haney, 642 West Chestnut Street. I just want to make sure, am I allowed to ask a question about parking? Because I believe I heard Mr. Smith said that's not this purview, but it is mentioned in the memo that's included in the packet.
Sure, you can ask a question. Whether anyone responds or the development chooses to respond, that's, that's up to them. Thank you.
Thank you. I just noted that at number nine in the, in the memo from SDC, it says that 47 spaces are going to be provided in the existing parking deck and that now 11 additional spaces will be located at 210 College Avenue. I assume 210 College Avenue is across the street the main hospital complex. Is that correct? And where, where within that development are these parking spaces being provided?
It's the southeast corner of the main hospital campus, which has been.
So under the Delp Pavilion?
Correct.
I'm just curious why, and cut me off if I ask too many questions, I'm just curious why these additional parking spaces aren't available within the existing parking deck that's adjacent to the HDC property. Thank you.
The existing parking deck is subject to a long-term agreement that it provides 100 of the spaces in the existing parking deck go to the existing medical office building that is there. And so, at least 100 of those spaces have to be taken out of the mix for the parking. You then have to, there also is going to be parking provided on the parking deck for the hospital renovation project, for the apartments there. And so you have to take that into the mix as well. And by not, by leaving in the ramp between the lower and the upper level of the parking deck, that took out some of the spaces that might otherwise have been available on the 217 site for HDC. In order to accommodate having more green space and not having the second access out onto Elm Street, accommodations had to be made.
Bruce Martin, also 642 West Chestnut Street. I'd like to thank HDC for addressing the neighborhood concerns relative to green space on Elm Street. That's very much appreciated. I think that that will make a, definitely a better project. I did feel like I did need to respond to some extent to the hyperbole related to the December 2020 meeting that didn't happen, or did happen, but many people were not notified of. I have an email here from Chad Martin, who at the time was an employee of HDC, who we sent an email to, wondering why we had not received notice of the meeting. We learned about it late in the day that it was being held and asked about it. And the response that we received was that, my apologies if you or others got missed. We did send out an email invitation to our initial list of contacts, but perhaps not everyone has been added to that list yet. Our flyer drop was more limited this time as the update pertains mostly, most directly to the site at 213 College Avenue. So it kind of goes back to the fact that many in the neighborhood were not aware of the change because they had not been notified of that virtual meeting on December 8th and hence, some of the confusion and discord that has occurred since. But I appreciate the efforts on HDC's behalf to take into account some of our concerns. Thank you.
I wanted to just briefly speak in support of the project and help you understand the importance of having accessible units in Lancaster City. My name's Bill Kepner. I'm the CEO of United Disability Services Foundation. UDSF has a 57-year history of serving individuals with disabilities in Lancaster City, Lancaster County. And we provide service and resources to enable them to live independently and safely in the community. Unfortunately, Lancaster City has a serious lack of affordable and accessible community-based housing, and it really poses a serious barrier to UDS's mission, which is to ensure that we help people serve and have their best life possible. We currently serve over 1,000 folks every single day in Lancaster County. Our consumers are living longer, more normal lifespans and are now outliving their parents and other caregivers. Others also have families to support, but they have very low-paying jobs. They need affordable, accessible places to live, but Lancaster currently offers very few options. We're excited because we think this project can really change that and is a great first step. That's why this development's so important to us and why UDSF is committed to a partnership with HDC on the apartments at 213 College Avenue. We're a nonprofit 501(c)(3), and frankly, we're financially challenged many times because we rely on government funding and we're underfunded with many vital services. But we feel so strongly about this project that UDS has committed a grant of $226,000 for the design and construction of 12 accessible units, as well as another $524,000 to make sure that there are rental subsidies for 15 years for those 12 units so people of any type of disability, any type of income level can live safely there. We're also going to use our experience in the disability community to assist HDC in making sure that those live there will fully benefit from the enhanced features, and we're going to provide ongoing support to the quality of life of these tenants. I think the approach is going to be truly collaborative and it's going to ensure very successful outcomes. So just to reinforce, we set aside $750,000 in total committed funds because we think this is so important and we think it's a huge unprecedented commitment, certainly for us, but we're very pleased to do it because we believe it is so much needed in supporting our special needs tenant population. I also believe this is a critical initiative for both the wider Lancaster community and those we serve. I thank you so much for this opportunity to talk to you.
Thank you.
I think this meeting is fabulous because we get the, the ability just to say a three-minute thing, so everybody take a big sigh and I'll be out of here. And it's age before beauty anyway. Sorry about that. My name's Roseanne Lofgren, and I live at Umbrella Works. I'm here to, to speak to support the affordable housing development of 213 College Avenue. I'm throwing this in just for a second. I was a clinical student at Willow Bat, Willow Street, becoming a practical nurse at the age of 42. And we used to have an in-service once a week for a year at St. Joe's Hospital. I know that house will be terrific for the people. Affordable housing is important to me based on my income. I can't afford to live in a general occupancy. I can't afford to live in a general occupancy. As a resident of another, of an HDC Housing Development Corporation Affordable Communion, I'd like to share that I lived over top of a funeral home. Yes, the guy was going to bury me someday. And there were 17 steps to get up above my apartment. Having to use a walker and use steps was not working. I applied at Umbrella Works Apartments and got in shortly afterwards. I lived at Umbrella for six years. I enjoy my apartment and have made many friends. Hablo español? That helps. And have many friends in my apartment and have friends in my building. I love my apartment is centrally located, close to a bus route, right out the front door. That's what College Avenue has too. A few blocks from town, Central Market, and the pharmacy. I have been able to maintain my independence. I still cook and clean. Other people are too busy watching soap operas. And best I can do is keeping my apartment clean and safe for me. I needed to speak today because affordable housing is necessary for me, and others may be in the same financial situation that I am. I have worked my entire life. I deserve to have a decent place to live, and that I can afford, and HDC has allowed me to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Chuck Manners, and I'm here to support both United Disabilities and the affordable housing development as proposed at 213 College Avenue. I happen to be a former resident of that neighborhood. In fact, both my children were born at St. Joseph's Hospital, the former hospital, so I know the area well. And I'm excited about the prospect of both affordable and accessible housing in that locale. This housing development is important to me because both of my children, now adults, have special needs. And the conversation my wife and I are having constantly, the one that keeps us up at night, is where are they going to live when we can no longer provide a home for them? We're getting older, and aging in place is only going to get us so far. And frankly, the current options for places to live for my children in Lancaster are very limited. We hope they will have safe places to live where they can access the services they need and also be able to participate in and contribute to the life of our community. With a partner like United Disabilities and a location like College Avenue, this project checks those critical boxes. Going forward, we will need many more options for families with disabled loved ones, but this is a great step for Lancaster City. And I want you to hear that as you proceed and make the decisions that you will need to make for this to become a reality. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Michelle LaGrassa, and I'm the owner of 663 West Chestnut Street.
I'm Jenny Gaiman. I'm also at 663 West Chestnut Street.
Nobody is arguing that tax credit housing is not essential in Lancaster City. My family and I own a real estate property management company in Lancaster, and we also manage a tax credit property. So we understand the absolute urgency and the need for this. I have a waiting list, I've testified to this before, of almost 300 names for individuals in this particular situation. Unfortunately, that's not why we're here today. I'm sure the commission is already familiar with the Landis Place project being constructed on the 200 block of West Chestnut Street, or excuse me, King Street. We currently manage a property that is roughly 100 feet from this project. Since the start of the project through today, we have documented cracking in the common area stairways, apartments, as well as windows throughout the property. We have an interior front door that now barely opens and a front security door that basically closes on its own from foundation shifting. This is our concern. It is not that of the tax credit property that's going behind us. It is a detrimental effect that this building of five stories will have on historic homes on the other side, Chestnut Street, College Avenue, Elm Street, et cetera. My question for the commission today is how do you plan to protect the structural integrity of the homes surrounding the College Avenue project? My home is only 66 feet from the proposed project. The ground disturbance alone that this vast project will produce is going to cause irreparable damage to historic surrounding homes, not just mine, but the ones within probably a block radius. This will also include...
I mean, you're talking horsehair plaster, the terracotta piping, slate roofing, everything is brittle. You're talking old. You disturb that horsehair plaster and basically half the houses could crumble under that, including foundation shifting. You change the dirt, you are changing basically half the structural foundations of the buildings.
While I understand that your positions are appointed, this is not the case for city council members or that of the mayor. I would like to express my disappointment with the city's position on the project and the other disregard for the residents' concerns as it relates to not only safety, but also preservation of our historic homes. I'm also saddened that the city and its commissions have put the interests of big business ahead of those residents who elect them to represent their best interests. I believe I speak for not only myself, but for many of the neighbors in this room, that we will not, we will not forget that our concerns have fallen on deaf ears when it comes time to elect or reelect members of our city government. Does the city turn a blind eye because the project is low-income tax credit? Do you build one for 64 and neglect or negate the residents and the historic homes that are already in the area? That is my question before you today.
Thank you. I will just make a clarifying point that Planning Commission has final approval of this project. It will not go before city council. I can't speak to what interactions you've had with the mayor or city council, but plan, final plan approval comes before this body. As far as the protection of the existing historic homes, Mr. Smith, would you like to speak to that from the point of view of the city and the city engineer?
Sure. Briefly, first, I'll say, Ms., if you could provide me your contact information, just so I can follow up on the Landis quality living issue that you mentioned, I'd be happy to do that. The soils are generally evaluated for land development, for stormwater infiltration. For building permits, there may be other structural engineering that is evaluated at that time. Certainly, that's part of the architect's work when building permits are submitted. So that typically is not handled at this particular stage. If site planning can be achieved, then we get into the constructability and the building permit, permitting. But certainly, I'm interested to find out what happened at Landis Place and understand that a little bit more. Happy to follow up with our building code officials too, to see what we might be able to do to anticipate or understand that possibility more.
My name is Edwin Martinez. I live in Duke Manor Apartments, owned by HDC. I am here to speak on behalf of the College Avenue Affordable Housing Project. I believe in this housing project, which is very important. Because A, there is a very long waiting list. B, the cost of living is increasing. And C, this project has a modified rent. As a resident of HDC, I want to share with you a personal experience. In 2017, September 2017, the hurricane Maria knocked on the doors of our island. A huge disaster. Two months without water, without electricity. We helped each other in order to survive. The material things were gone. But thank God we have life. After two months of struggle, we had to leave the island. Due to health reasons of my wife, Wanda. We arrived in Lancaster. We began to look for the necessary help. I remember my first week of January 2018. During which there was a Duke Manor Apartments children's activity. And to that activity, to that project, we went as volunteers. And there we helped. And we met the administrator. And she asked, "Where did we leave?" And we told her that we had lost everything back on our island. It has been a blessing for us. To come to Lancaster. Although far away from my children, grandchildren, and family. But thank God, I'm all right. I have my health. A roof. Under which I can sleep. And a community I love. Very thankful for HDC and the city of Lancaster. We try to help others. Who might have other needs. I might not be able to repay with money. So much that has been done for me. I only ask God. Great blessings on this city. For its kindness. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Beth Baez, and I have lived at 655 West Chestnut Street for 10 years. My home was built in 1891 and is one of six homes backing to the project at 213 College that was designed by C. Emlyn Urban. As well as all of the other neighbor concerns, including safety of the homes that back up to the project without any rear access for utility or emergency vehicles, I'm also very concerned about the impact of the trees and yards of the 600 block of West Chestnut. I am disappointed that the last shade tree commission meeting with HDC was supposed to present was canceled this past week. According to Lancaster City website, the Shade Tree Commission, working in conjunction with the city arborist, works to maximize the benefit derived from public shade trees by establishing policies for the planting, removal, maintenance, and protection of trees. I have had the city arborist, Jim Bauer, out to my house to examine my trees on various occasions and to apply for a permit to remove a very large, over 100-year-old English walnut tree that was dying. It was an ordeal of over a couple of years, as we watched and waited to make sure removal was the best and only option. He also looked at several other trees in my yard, including a huge Norway maple and an American elm tree, which he stated was one of the largest he has seen. This tree is at the rear of my property. The canopy of the tree goes over three neighboring backyards and over the parking deck behind me. It towers as high as the proposed new construction. My neighbor at 659 has a similar tree. It sprawls over the existing one-level building at 213 College. I believe the lack of light and shade from the proposed building will have an effect on those trees left in our backyards. And there are several huge ones, including the three-plus-story maple in my mid-backyard. Then I give you the printouts. I understand that Douglas Smith, chief planner of the city, was recently out to a meeting with my neighbor at 661 and was also taking pictures of the backyards and trees. I hope to hear from HDC soon or the city about how they are going to handle the preservation or removal of these trees, including my own. Including, in closing, I'm against the size and height of this project. When it was originally presented to us, it was taking over the footprint of the existing MRI building. One-story building with just 30 to 40 units. Why does the city need to cover more hardscape and airspace, blocking light for an entire city block? You've been talking about college, the footprint, but the majority of the building goes from college to Elm, five stories. I believe that the old St. Joseph's City block could have incorporated the number of units being proposed at the 213 site, leaving this area across the street as the parking deck and green space. Thank you.
Thank you. Would the city like to respond?
Sure, I'll briefly say, well, first, thank you for raising the point about the trees. You know, we try our best to really, and the developers in the room can attest to this, we're very strict about tree preservation, and we will enforce our ordinance here as we always do. Certainly, I recognize that there are challenges here with the way that the trees lean and, you know, private property rights are from the property line up to the heavens, down to the earth, through the earth. So that there could be unfortunate consequences for these trees. I will say that the Shade Tree Commission makes decisions based on the public right-of-way trees, the street trees. It's actually this commission that enforces tree regulations in regards to private property require, so when a large tree is removed, there are certain requirements for replacement. Tree preservation to the maximum extent possible is the language that is in our ordinance. And there typically are also trees required for parking. Of course, this parking structure doesn't allow for opportunities there. But we will certainly be taking a very close look at the tree issues on this particular development. We have an urban forester who does an excellent job reviewing all of our plans for tree preservation and planting specifications.
Douglas, will those comments from city staff be presented at the final plan, final land development plan meeting?
So typically, between now and a final meeting, there would be a series of iterations of the plan between staff and the developer, so that we can get to a plan that is in compliance with our ordinances before it would come back to the Planning Commission. I'm certainly happy to make all of those comment letters available as needed. Our first letter will be provided next week. That one in particular wouldn't typically come to the Planning Commission, but again, I'm happy to provide that if there's interest.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Christina Duncan, and I'm the executive director of Malagro House. We're located at 669 West Chestnut Street, which is on the corner of College Avenue and West Chestnut. And our property is directly adjacent and probably the closest property to the 213 College Avenue building. Malagro House is approaching 25 years of serving Lancaster and surrounding communities. We've owned the West Chestnut Street property since 2004. We support HDC's efforts around Phase 1 of the affordable housing plans for 213 College Avenue. Of note, Malagro House is a collaborating partner for Phase 2 of the adaptive reuse of the former UPMC St. Joseph's Hospital site. At the heart of our mission is alleviating poverty and supporting long-term sustainability by giving women and children access to educational opportunities, both GED and post-secondary. And education is one of the most important factors that influences a woman's ability to find a job at a family-sustaining wage. Our investment in their success continues after they graduate from our core program, and a holistic scaffolding of support is provided through a program called Beyond Malagro House. But the ability for our women and children to thrive after leaving Malagro House is dependent equally... dependent equally on three primary factors: safe, affordable housing, affordable accessible childcare, and employment at a family-sustaining wage. In theory, a family-sustaining wage means being able to find a safe, affordable place to live. Without it, they will struggle and likely fall back into poverty. We have no doubt that at one point or another, we have all met a woman in Lancaster who has benefited from the Malagro House program. They are healthcare workers that care for us when we're sick. They're customer service representatives for local companies. They're paralegals, they're childcare workers, they're small business owners, and they are industry managers. And they need a place to live when they leave us. The ability for them, I'm sorry, however, the waiting list for affordable housing, including HTC's, is years long and women who graduate from our program are often on those lists. According to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, Lancaster County would need to bring 1,150 affordable apartments online each year to meet that demand. Having a safe place to live is a necessity for a woman and her children moving from Malagro House. Lack of affordable housing delays the process. For a nonprofit, always at capacity with twenty-five to thirty women on our waiting list, the delay in moving one family out means we cannot help another family who desperately needs our program. Malagro House is successful because we exist in an incredibly generous and welcoming community. Our entry into the Chestnut Hill neighborhood in 2004 also created opportunities to have open discussions around pressing issues. Since then, we have become an integral part of the vibrant fabric of this diverse neighborhood. We care greatly about its future. We understand that there are many valid and heartfelt perspectives surrounding this discussion. From our perspective, HTC's plan is good for our community. The planned development of 213 College Avenue adds exponentially to the number of affordable housing units available in Lancaster while openly and thoughtfully addressing the impact a project of this scope, excuse me, will have on the neighborhood. A project like this one removes the barriers that stand in the way of so many who are striving to realize their dream of a home they can afford, one that creates a safe and consistent place where they and their children can thrive. Phase One of this project is the first step and a positive one towards solving a difficult challenge that has a ripple effect across this entire community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jake Thorson. I'm wearing two hats. I'm resident of 300 block of Pearl Street and also here representing Tenfold, which is a nonprofit organization whose mission is to spark the power in all people to achieve equitable housing and financial security. At Tenfold, we believe housing is a human right and at the center of a thriving community. Creating new housing for our community will ensure the long-term health and provide opportunities to individuals that will pay dividends. As our community continues to grow, we must ensure that we are creating space and opportunities for all, including our most vulnerable individuals. At Tenfold, our team works diligently to assist individuals and find and secure sustainable housing. For our clients, accessing the housing market is often unobtainable to them. There is limited number of quality affordable rentals available in Lancaster today. Residents are forced to make difficult choices for their family to attain housing, often spending well over the HUD recommended thirty percent of their income for housing. For example, we've recently piloted a housing location program that works with vulnerable residents to secure housing in the private market by providing case management, advocacy, education, and a one-time security deposit or first-month rent. On average, a client entering our program and then leaving our program is spending fifty-two percent of their income on housing. And they're spending $370 more for the next apartment that they get on rent. One of the contributing factors to the increasing of housing costs through the city is the lack of supply. The Center for Regional Analysis estimates that the vacancy rate in the rental market is two and a half percent and that the city needs an estimated six hundred to thirteen hundred additional units to meet the current demand. That's a city, that's a study that the city commissioned. The lack of supply will cause housing prices to continue to rise for all residents and make housing out of the reach for our residents. As a community, we must increase the supply of quality housing and affordable units. The same study referenced states that eighty-eight percent of the city's parcels developed have housing on it. We need to create dense housing. The amount of developable lots in the city is extremely limited. This project creates that development, maximizing our limited space and creating one of our most, our community's most needed resources, affordable housing. We're here to support the development at College Ave with HTC. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Deborah Sillsky, 644 West Chestnut. We've gotten very off-topic about the actual building itself here. I do feel I'd like to address one thing about the timing of how this project came to be known in our neighborhood, the size of it. Actually, it was the planning commission that opened the door for this building to start growing very, very early in this process. When you rezoned 213 College Avenue to R4, at that time of the rezoning of that piece of property, this project was still being presented as perhaps a thirty, thirty-five-unit structure. And then it seemed a very reasonable thing. But know, when you rezoned that piece of land, you did not put in any protections against this project growing exponentially. And that's exactly what happened. So I would really like to know, how did you not put in anything to protect the neighborhood? Did you know at the time when you rezoned 213 that HTC was looking to acquire adjacent lands? That's very important. Thank you.
So I will speak to that because I think myself and Mr. Polite were the only two members of Planning Commission that were on commission at the time that the rezoning came through. And I will say that I did not. I don't know if city staff had knowledge of the expansion of the project, but when they presented, we were looking just at that parcel for rezoning. Would city staff like to make comment?
Sure, I'll just, I'll say that the dimensions of the RO zone, which it was previously, and the R4 zone, which it is now, are exactly the same. Five stories, all of the setbacks, everything is, was exactly the same. The rezoning really was to signal a change in use. When we do rezonings, we don't do them based on any particular project. And our recommendation letter to city council demonstrates that. There wasn't any particular project that that parcel of land was rezoned for. Yes, we knew that, and I'll have to go back through my archives, but I believe at that time, we understood that there was development potential there because UPMC had made public that they were offering that portion of land. And we knew that as a city, we were advocating for that portion of land to be affordable housing. That was part of, you know, the public process. But when we rezon a piece of land and when I and other staff make that recommendation, we do it with a long, a long view. We want to understand in twenty years or in fifty years, you know, what is, what are the uses that we want to see here that are compatible with the surrounding neighborhood? The Chestnut Street corridor is an R4 corridor. There is neighborhood businesses allowed, there's multifamily permitted by special exception, there's five stories that are permitted there. We saw that area of, that side of College Ave as being distinctly part of the R4 neighborhood and not the mixed-use neighborhood that was going to be developed across the street. We see them as being complementary to one another, but the R4 would have allowed for some of those same Chestnut Street uses that are, that are currently existing there. So that, that's really the context in which we rezoned this. Yes, we knew that we wanted to encourage or allow for some kind of residential use there. R4 is more appropriate for that than RO, but we also did not see that considering, continuing to be a medical office use given hospital exiting that, that portion of the city. So again, there was nothing, there was no backdoor dealing or nefarious thing, you know, we were trying to evaluate this from purely a land use perspective, had not seen any site plan at that point. And I believe that, you know, the, the commission, you know, made the same reflections that I did on that and it was recommended to city council for, for approval. So I hope that answers, addresses some of the concerns there. Sorry, miss. We're, I'll allow, allow one follow-up question, but we're trying to limit to three minutes apiece, so, and then use the mic, please.
Okay. Your letter to city council recommending the designation to be for 213 to go to R4 does reference the Adamsbury Associates project.
So Adamsbury was the one that initiated the rezoning request? The city plant?
But that is actually a subsidiary, correct?
Yes, and ma'am, rezonings can happen in multiple ways. City council can request that the planning commission review a rezoning, the planning commission can initiate a rezoning, and any private resident, including yourself, could submit a request for $900 with an application for a rezoning. So it was the landowner's right, it was, you know, that company's right to submit for a rezoning. We evaluated the rezoning based on that request of an R4 and, and that's what the planning commission had, had based their recommendation on. And, and again, we reevaluated on, on those conditions and parameters that I mentioned.
Good evening. Bill Hannigan, 304 College Avenue. Members of the planning commission, staff, Mr. Smith. A review of the city subdivision and land development ordinance was undertaken for the comments and questions I will offer tonight. These comments are a follow-up to a statement I made to this commission on February 2nd. The statement I make tonight is based in part on Mr. Smith's response via email, and I much appreciate that. I would like to say that a subject of the trees came up tonight for the first time and had serious review. I have pictures of the way the base around that tree was trashed by heavy vehicles going in there doing whatever they were doing. And this is perhaps ECS is doing, but what's the consequences of getting inside the drip line of a tree and tearing up the turf the way it shows in my pictures? So I've never had a chance to bring that up and, and that's something I take this opportunity to do. In my review, and I'll be brief because I was able to submit this to Mr. Smith for the record and he'll receive an email copy. I made every effort to identify listings by section, letter, and/or number for blocks, level of traffic, transportation, impact study, joint use of parking facilities, location of parking facilities, and off-street loading requirements. These are all fall under SALDO. I started my presentation February 2nd by asking in accordance with Section 265-36 Blocks A, parentheses one, please provide data on blocks within, with a length of more than 400 feet for the following, and that would be the 600 block of West Chestnut, 600 block of West Walnut, 800 block of West Walnut, 800 block of Marriott, and 200 block of Northwest End Avenue. These blocks appear to me to be eligible but are without the piano key markings for safe pedestrian circulation. In your reply, Mr. Smith wrote, "It would be reasonable to look at mid-block crossing opportunities on these streets." He mentioned that another look will be made at College Avenue, which has a mid-block crossing. And so I urge the city to look at these blocks now, ahead of when the larger hospital development occurs. The safety of pedestrians is at risk as I speak. At this point, I rest my case. This statement is with the planning commission and I very much appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is. My name is John McGrann. I live at 636 West Chestnut. So I'm about a block away from this project. I'm not as, as adjacent and directly impacted to some of the other neighbors here, but I do actively use Elm Street and I do appreciate the changes to the plan relative to Elm Street garage and Elm Street traffic. I think that was, I, I did have some concerns about that. But with that having been addressed, I'm going to say that I'm, I'm excited about this project. I appreciate this project. I think it's going to be a good thing for our neighborhood. I've spent a lot of my life advocating around land use outside of the city and in the city. And my opinion is that we need to make the best, most dense, most compact use of the spaces that are available. If zoning permits this building to be five stories tall, I think it should be five stories tall so that we can make the most compact use of what's available. And, and, you know, I've also, I've participated in as many of the presentations for our neighborhood as I could have. And I'm thinking back mostly to what I, I can't promise that I remember this exactly, but when I think about the first presentation, when this was first introduced, you know, one of the things that really stood out to me is that I feel fairly certain that both in, you know, in people who spoke up and people who added comments to the chat, there was disappointment with the original plan that there wasn't more affordable housing. One of the things that I heard time and time again in that presentation is that people wanted as much affordable housing as possible. And so it's, I'm glad that there was an opportunity to, to increase it from thirty to sixty. I think that's good for our community. I know our city needs that. So, and, you know, but most of all, I'm excited about this. I'm excited for the opportunity to welcome hundreds of new people to our neighborhood. I'm excited to see the block of West End Avenue that used to be housing, that's now a parking lot, that's going to become housing again, become housing again. I'm excited to see a hospital turned into residences for people. I'm excited about the amenities that'll follow when new businesses and new services come and, you know, in response to an influx of neighbors. And I think it's going to be a great opportunity for our neighborhood to welcome lots of new, different, fun people, and I'm excited about that. So I am glad that this project is happening and I hope it keeps moving forward.
Thank you.
I'm also in favor of new fun people. My name is Kate Zimmerman. I'm the co-chair of the Coalition for Sustainable Housing. We are a diverse group of organizations, individuals, volunteers who collaborate, advocate, and educate for housing solutions for everyone. As a coalition, we value collaboration across various sectors, bringing together diverse perspectives, fun people, and experiences to achieve our shared purpose. Advocacy for a range of housing choices for everyone, education through best practices and data-driven knowledge, and housing which sustains our families' and households', economy, and quality of life. I'm here today on behalf of the Coalition in support of HTC Mid-Atlantic's proposed College Avenue development, a project that aligns with our coalition's visions and values. It's no secret that our community continues to experience an affordable housing crisis. I know it is eight o'clock at night and I'm not going to repeat the statistics to all of you. The numbers are dire and our neighbors and community members are in need of housing. The College Ave development promises to be one of the largest and most comprehensive redevelopment in the city in decades. With sixty-four affordable apartments, it would also be one of the most important steps towards addressing the deficit of affordable workforce housing, meeting five percent of the need for affordable housing in the city today. The site is ideally situated for successful multipurpose development. The surrounding neighborhood includes a healthy mix of owner-occupied and rental housing and a wide range of household incomes. It is also walkable to our city center and also to jobs. HTC's proposed development represents an exceptional opportunity to create new affordable housing within a thriving and diverse neighborhood in one of Pennsylvania's most outstanding third-class cities. Therefore, the Coalition for Sustainable Housing supports the proposed development. This project will be truly transformational and investment in the future of housing availability and stability in the city of Lancaster. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
I think Tom is going to speak, right, Tom? Sorry about this.
Hi, I'm Jay Rosenthal. I live at West Chestnut Street. And there's been a lot of great dialogue between all, all individuals here, which was very much appreciated. And I think that I speak on behalf And I think that I speak on behalf of many neighbors, certainly not all the neighbors, but we are without question supportive of affordable housing. There's no question about that. It really was about the process and the way in which it was ultimately divulged that it was going to be a larger-scale project than what it was initially conceived. And a matter of fact, if you go on the website today, I forget what the name of it's called, but collegeavenueplanning.com, I think the outline of the site is still showing just the 213 College Avenue, not the additional parcels of 224 and 217 Streets, or 217 College and 224, 226 Elm Street. So it's just reflective of just that smaller portion of land. So I know that there's a lot of things that aren't necessarily in your purview, but a lot of stuff has been brought up with respect to zoning and so on. And I know that zoning was changed even more recently, back in January, to accommodate a larger structure. And so it was, it was done, quite frankly, knowing that it was only going to work with 64 units and not the original 30 units. And the notion of having one large facility, almost a contiguous, I'm sorry, I'm doing the same thing everybody else does, and I try to avoid that, but the contiguous run from College to Elm Street at five stories high, certainly it's appreciated, though, that the parking egress and ingress into Elm, off of Elm Street and into Elm Street has been eliminated, which was a big issue for the neighborhood. But all that aside, I think just the notion of having 64 units within one site is rather intrusive to the neighborhood with respect to the heights of the buildings and so on. And zoning was changed to accommodate, to accommodate the larger size of the building, going up five stories, if you will, because of the setbacks that were granted. So the laws can be changed, and recognizing that, that we would hope that the council, the commission here, would also look at, even though it's zoned for 50, 60 feet high, five stories in this case, why couldn't, why couldn't there be a restriction placed on, on the height and the girth of the building itself? So I know, I know that it doesn't necessarily all fall under your purview, but, you know, the notion of an alleyway would certainly be a benefit to, to not only the residents in this new structure, but also the residents that own the homes along West Chestnut Street. Malaga House has been a great neighbor, a great neighbor, for the, for the three, almost three years that I've lived on the block. And we're glad to see that it's going to be continuing up to be a part of the DLP building in the hospital site. I love the fact that it was brought up also today about looking at the whole site as one contiguous project, because quite frankly, there's a lot of unknowns with respect to that parking structure, that two-deck parking structure. I think there's some 200 spaces collectively. I don't know if anybody has a complete number, but it seems HDC only knows their portion and not the WPE portion. But literally, as I see it, 11 people are going to have to park across the street for the College Avenue project, and as I looked at the plans for the WPE project in the St. Joseph's Hospital structure, they're only allowing about 90 spaces in there for parking, and there's 160 units. So those people are going to have to traverse across the street. So there's going to be a lot of cross-College Avenue traffic from pedestrians and autos and so on that really needs to be looked at as holistically, I think. This project, I know it was brought up, Douglas brought it up in one of the meetings, maybe it was historic, or maybe it was planning, with respect to the yards, what's that called? The yards project, the, I'm sorry, the, thank you, the stockyards project, and how that when, when the commission, the historic commission was looking at that, they need to consider also the project that was being developed, which is the gateway to the city right across the street, so right in front of the train station. So literally, you know, you need to look at the entire, the entire parcel, if you will, or parcels, the four phases. I don't want to overspeak and/or talk about things that were talked about prior. But the soils report is of issue because literally it was brought up by my neighbor in their home and seeing some of the damage.
You are over time.
Okay, I'll end there. That's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And then I just have, before Mr. Baldridge comes up to make comments, I do have just one thought exercise for the developers. Approximately how many floors would have been needed to be built only on the 213 parcel to accommodate the 64 units that are proposed?
Gary Weaver with Tippets Weaver. Actually, early on in the project, when we were first brought in, we looked at options for trying to get the number of units on the 213 site, which was more like, I think we came to 10 floors to get to that number.
Thank you.
My name is Tom Baldridge. I'm the president of Lancaster Chamber, and I'm pleased to be here with you this evening. When you're toward the end, and you've appropriately asked, ma'am chairwoman, not to come up here and repeat things, it's a little bit difficult to know what's left. I will be submitting a letter on behalf of the Lancaster Chamber that's in support of this project, and just make the obvious point that workforce is an absolute critical shortage in Lancaster County as a whole, not the least of which is in the city. One of the key barriers for workforce in Lancaster County, increasingly so, is affordable housing. This is an absolutely essential project, not just for those residents that need that affordable housing, but also for the companies that support this community through their employment and taxes as well, needing workers that can afford to live in the community, and this is an ideal location for so many of that, to provide that opportunity. But that's not what I'm here to talk about, because many of those points have already been made. I simply want to make the point that in my time as a president of the chamber, and in my work that I've done in the community, I have gained tremendous amount of respect for HDC and what they do. I've watched them handle projects and go places where other people wouldn't dare go. I recognize that there's been some concerns expressed tonight about the process to date, but I also want to point out that it's been my experience and observation even here tonight is that the process is working as it should because it continues to allow and invite dialogue, and then changes are made accordingly to make sure that the end product is in as much agreement as possible, yet still accomplish the needs of both sides. And I'm hopeful that today continues that process in a way of we look at this as, how can we get it done, as opposed to why we shouldn't get it done? Because I think we must get this done. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have one question for you, Mr. Baldridge, before you leave the podium.
Yes.
Has the chamber done any research into job centers close to this project that would be accessible either via walking or public transit for residents? So what some of the larger employers in this neighborhood for potential residents would be?
We have not, we have not done anything like that specifically, but if it would at all help the project, we could very easily poll companies in proximity and get letters of support from them, who I know are anxiously awaiting this type of development, and frankly, hopefully, many others across the county.
Yeah, thank you. That's not in our purview. It's just a point that's been made again and again in support of affordable housing, and I agree, but I'm just wondering if there's any data.
So we have done that. There was a project in, I believe it was Manor Township, it was not an HDC project. It was probably four or five years ago. I lose track of time. And we did get, there were a whole bunch of employers around there that were very willing to write letters suggesting that this would be a perfect place for them to draw workforce for. It is an easy ask, and I assure you that there are many eager employers that would write that letter.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Do any other members of the public have comment?
Chris Hezerkoglu. I live at 666 West Chestnut Street. Just wanted to acknowledge the HDC for making some changes on Elm Street. I wanted to bring up the issue of cohesion of design. The city has an opportunity to manage this process so you, this whole thing comes together well. And I made note that some other entity owns the parking garage, and it was stated that there were 100 spaces for the medical building across the street. I didn't know if it's no longer a medical building.
Oh, I think they were referencing the medical building that's along the same side of College Avenue. It's currently a physician's office.
Okay, well, if it's no longer a medical.
It is. It's active.
Oh, okay, never mind. I didn't understand that part. And also just wanted to just say that, you know, in a democratic process, you know, raising questions about the process should not be a matter of defense to anyone, so it's good that things were able to be explained and, you know, no offense in asking questions.
Thank you. At this time, are there any other questions or comments for this project at 213 College Avenue from the public? Any additional questions or comments from members of the commission, from staff?
I'd like to add some final comments. First, as always, I want to just thank everybody for participation in this process. You know, many of the comments that you've already offered have already improved this project, I believe, and I believe that they will continue to. So thank you for taking your time. I know it is, it is not a small task to come out on a weeknight like this and spend two hours discussing development, so I appreciate that. Also, while I personally, and I think staff are very much in support of affordable housing, I want to assure you that the process that's being applied here is really the same that's being applied to any other for-profit developer that we deal with. We try our best to apply the same standards. We recognize that there's some public benefit certainly to this project, and there's a sense of collaboration and camaraderie with HDC towards that goal, and they're certainly a core partner of ours. You know, this commission, our job is to really to make sure that this is a safe and good development for the community. I just don't want anyone to think that we're expecting anything less of this project than we would of any other project. I do really appreciate the comment that was made just about sound process at the end, and that, you know, we shouldn't be afraid to ask about process and how that's done. And so thank you for that. I am a process nerd. That is primarily, that is a lot of what we do here at the city. I know that there is a desire for this project and other College Ave redevelopments to be considered holistically. These developments all have their own private property rights to pursue their requests and developments per their parcel, and there's no way that staff can compel them to submit a joint proposal. But I do want to assure you that city staff is a common thread between all of these developments, and that we really do our best to look at these as comprehensively as we can. And that is why we have project meetings with the team, HDC and WPE regularly, to make sure that we are looking at this in a more comprehensive way. I will also say that the use of the garage structure is really a positive thing, and I hope that it can be repaired and revitalized. It is not in good condition, and it's been underused. And, you know, having an underutilized parking area is not great for our city. It's not a good use of land. There is not much that's unusual about multiple entities coming in to collaborate on filling a garage. The RTA garage on Queen and Chestnut is one great example, where we have 215 North Queen that's going to be using those spaces. We have the tower proposed across the street, which will be aiming to use those spaces. And this is a good thing. And, you know, WPE will be the private landowner there and working with HDC and other tenants, including the medical office, to fill that garage and make good use of it so that it doesn't sit empty. I suppose that's all I have to say at this point. There will be another meeting here before any action is considered. I encourage you to reach out to me or other staff if you have questions about the process. I know many of you already do, and I appreciate that, and I'll try to be as responsive as I can. And again, you know, I want to thank the commission and the public just for a long night of good engagement and good questions and thoughtfulness. So thank you.
I will provide a last opportunity if anyone from the project team wants to come up and make final comments based around the public comment we've heard tonight. If not, I will move on to our next agenda item, our housing subcommittee. Great, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
So we have no items for our housing subcommittee. Are there any comprehensive plan reports or updates from city staff?
Madam Chair, before we get into the comprehensive plan, I wanted to make a request, actually add a redevelopment authority item to the agenda for consideration. You can decide whether you want to add this now or not. 613 Beaver Street is a property that was previously condemned by the commission or determined to be blighted and has been condemned for quite some time. We've been asked to make a recommendation on the appropriate use of the above, of this property. And Mendelley, would you mind just pulling up the street view of this property? This is 613 Beaver Street. The redevelopment authority would like to act on this property if the landowner doesn't move to rectify the conditions there. So this is a picture of the property, and we're just showing this to you so you can get a sense of the neighborhood and how the property has been used. It's been residential for many years. It's in a pretty solidly residential area, and so planning staff is recommending that the city planning commission recommend that the use be residential going forward with Rackle redevelops it.
Is there any need to state whether it should be single-family or multifamily residential? Is it currently single or multi?
So it's a single-family right now. In the past, we've opted to just broadly say residential and leave it up to the developer to pursue anything. I don't immediately remember what the zoning is here, but I can certainly pull that up. Probably R3, if I had to guess. Mendelley is working on it here, 613.
I would just be curious if it's a predominantly single-family neighborhood. Would it make sense to keep the recommended use in line with that?
Yeah, give me one moment here. Let's pull that up.
Yeah, or the number of electric meters.
So it's R3, which is predominantly single-family homes, semi-detached or attached. In this case, we have attached on both sides. I'll leave it to the commission for consideration there. We can look at the neighborhood a little bit more if you'd prefer to figure out what other uses are there.
Sounds like there's a party in the hallway. Do other members of commission have thoughts on recommended use, whether it should be specified to be single or multifamily, or just a general residential use?
General residential.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, general residential. Okay, so if you want to act on this, we should make a motion to add it to the agenda, and then we can make the motion, or you can make the motion for residential use.
Sure, I'll make a motion to add that item to the agenda, and I second.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Hackett and a second from Commissioner Whelan. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Hearing none. The motion to add the recommendation for 613 Beaver Street to the agenda passes unanimously.
I'll make a motion to recommend 613 Beaver Street as residential use, and I will second that.
We have a motion from Commissioner Hackett and a second from Commissioner Whelan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none. The motion to recommend 613 Beaver Street for residential use passes unanimously.
Wonderful, thank you.
Do you need a signature on that?
Yes, I will. In fact, if you could pass that down to Ms. Ritchie, thank you. For the comprehensive plan, wow, there's so much to say here. I'll try to keep this brief. We have been designing a land use exercise and a visual preference survey for bringing out to the public in May, and we conducted our first exercise with the comprehensive plan committee. And Ms. Cook was able to participate in that exercise as well, so thank you. And we're working on refining the activity based on the feedback that we got from the comprehensive plan. I expect that I will be bringing this to the Planning Commission, too. In fact, if we could, you know, dedicate a portion, or maybe all of our meeting, or even set up a separate work session, I would really appreciate input from you all. set up a separate work session, I would really appreciate input from you all in this exercise, especially as, you know, being our local planning experts. We are wrapping up the Lancaster Today Report, and we're very excited that that is on the way. We've sent it out for another round of review to different staff because we feel like we hadn't covered all of the topics and used all of the expertise we had in-house. So that's an exciting development. That's close to the finish line, and that is our baseline study for the comp plan for current conditions in the city. We have contracted with RegenAll, which is a climate action group in Lancaster County, and they're, one of their members, Franklin Egan, and Melinda Clatterbuck are working with us to design a community outreach process to include climate action in our comprehensive plan. So they're going to be setting up a couple of public engagement sessions and also providing language translation services when needed to make sure that climate action is a core part of our climate, sorry, our comprehensive plan. There's so, I mean, there's so many things that I could continue to go on about. Those are sort of the big deliverable items, so I don't want to bore you with more than that, but.
I think that's great for tonight and the time that we're at.
Okay, good.
Thanks. All right, moving on to agenda item number seven. The first number seven on the agenda. Is there any other public participation for this evening? Seeing none, I will move on to the second number seven. At 8:48, I will adjourn this meeting on April 20th, 2022, of the Lancaster City Planning Commission. Thank you.
All right, you're the best.
I'm going to go over and check that out.
Yeah, you too. Take care.
Okay, I can make that happen.
It's tight over there. It's small.
Hi, Shirley.
I did not.
You can also turn it off.
Okay, yes, no problem. Thank you. Thank you for asking.
Yeah, it's a very tight street.
Tight street, yeah.
Yeah, like, you know, they came last time, they were talking about, you know, there's a, you know, Reynolds Middle School there, and the church on Elm Street is a school as well. So there's a lot of.
There's something, man. There's something. You know, I don't think we're doing this. I don't know, since I wasn't involved.
They sent the information out.
Yeah, and said this is what it's going to be. So for it to be that, for it to be that.
Somehow, yeah.
You know what I mean? That's the thing that got me.
It seemed like they moved real quick.
Yeah.
To their advantage.
Yeah, took advantage of the pandemic situation, too.
Sure, yeah, yeah, yeah. And, you know, they're talking about for it to be viable for them. So, you know, it's not so much that.
Hey, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Good to see you.
Yeah, you too.
Mr. Clay, I wanted to.